Yeah.
Cloud.
Yeah.
Locked up.
Yeah.
The rest.
I don't know.
It's.
There is.
Our.
I think it's.
I mean.
Really.
I'm.
But.
It's.
Something.
She.
She.
I mean.
But more strongly she.
The same place that I'm in.
We do.
I think.
Like.
I would.
Your garden.
She.
Is that?
Wasn't.
You're.
Okay.
That's.
Good.
Good.
You know.
I mean.
Yeah.
No.
They're.
They're.
Red.
He's very beautiful.
But.
One.
They got to buy a lot of water.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks.
Simple, yeah. It's. This one. Not the third. But. Hundred bucks. Maybe. Just. Yeah. Four hundred.
That's got to go back to like.
Oh, I think. I can. Even. That. It's. Four. But. So. You have. Uh. Tom. I was. An. Actually. You. But you want. So. Party mail. Watched. For that.
Me so.
It's like good. Well. Really. I'm not. You mean. So. Yeah. Seriously. We're. We're. On test.
Forget something?
No.
I did.
Sir.
Couldn't find it, but I found it. I go.
Oh, good.
You know, when you're holding your cell phone and you're looking for yourself.
Yeah.
You can get that kind of moment. Mine, I don't know where my glasses are. My glasses. On me. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. That's what she. Left. Yeah. Yeah. It's. Nice. You.
All right, well, welcome everyone to our study session and call the order of the study session of West Valley City Council. It is July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. And it is still. Maybe four thirty? Yep, four thirty P M. We're in the multi-purpose room of West Valley City Hall. Uh, we have all men, well. You will excuse. Councilman Fitziamonu.
He just joined online.
Oh, he just joined online? Okay. And then Councilman Hune will be here in a few minutes. At the table, we have. Councilman Norfelt, Councilman Christensen. Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Furman. Myself, and then we're joined with our city manager, Mr. Pyle, and our secretary of order, Ms. Kamic. Um, I'll now turn the time to the council for review, discussion or motion on the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Motion to approve within twenty minutes. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Call in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, and those stand approved. Um, our regular meeting today has been canceled. And we will now. Uh, we have a presentation next week by Corey Rushton. Um, concerning the proposal for a tax increase at Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. A few years ago, the legislature. Passed a law that. Taxing entities need to come before the. City they represent and explain the tax increase. So that residents have a chance. To know about those, and then they'll also be informed about the public hearing that Jordan Valley will have in August. I can't tell you the date. I don't know, but he'll tell you next week. Um, so it will be a public hearing. Is it?
The next week?
No, it's just a.
It's just.
The public. Just a comment, yeah. And nobody will comment after him, right? Just information only.
I believe he provides the information, and then there's an opportunity for citizens and the council to ask questions that there are.
So it is kind of a.
Which is why it says public input.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Not a formal public hearing, but.
If you have any input, you're welcome to get.
Okay, so we'll invite people up if they have.
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then. We have a proclamation, um, the neighborhood nights. Would anybody like to read that next week?
I will.
Okay. Another word to Harmon. And then our next item is our public hearings. And we have application Z T for twenty twenty-three. Um, Mr. Pastrick will be presenting that. Mr. Powell, did you have any comments before he came to the? Mike?
Uh, yeah, just real quick, ma'am, to introduce the whole section here, because there are a number of items that are associated with this. So it's really just introducing. The fact that, uh, we've talked about a number of changes for a number of months, and they have. Kind of forgot that or lost track of that, but the reason we're here now is now that a lot of these actions have aligned, whether they went through the planning commission or for other reasons, uh, we're now bringing them to basically the same. So with that, I'm, I'm done, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. So these are all changes proposed to the zoning ordinance. Uh, all of these changes were requested by the council. I'll just walk through briefly those changes. So there's four sections of code that are changing. The first is our definition section where we're adding a term decorative dirt, uh, to that section, uh, including a definition there. The second one is the. Uh, the section that regulates artificial turf. And the change there would be that it would allow artificial turf in all park strips. Uh, the third change has to do with, um, garage sales, so that would reduce the number of garage sales allowed from four to three per year. And then finally, uh, the section that deals with landscaping for senior family homes, there's a number of changes there. So the first would be that when it comes to calculating the required live plant material percentages, it would be based on the plants at full growth or maturity as opposed to when they're first planted, okay? Uh, the second is allowing decorative dirt as a ground cover. And then third would be, uh, when artificial turf is used, it could count towards all of the live plant material. So those are, those are all the, the changes that were requested by the council as far as, as they relate to the zoning ordinance, that is.
Hey, thank you. Any questions from council? Okay. Seeing none?
Sure.
Okay.
It took me a little while, yeah. Um, yes, we still have a thirty percent. Green.
Correct.
Material.
Correct.
Any question? I know when we reviewed this, we looked at examples of decorative dirt and. I didn't think it looked that bad, but. According to planning commission, there seemed to be some concerns about that section of the changes.
Right.
Did they have the same presentation we had, or?
They did. They saw the picture. I think their concern was just the, um. In their view, the aesthetic of that, but also just, uh, being able to enforce the no weed part gets a little bit nuanced. So I think those are a couple of concerns they mentioned.
So is that something we should talk about or just package it all and?
No, we can talk about individual items on there if you have a concern. Did they send back the recommendation to not have the decorative dirt?
Pretty sure.
Okay.
Pretty much, yes.
Yeah. So we can add it back in if we want. Or take their recommendation.
So.
Are moving it out?
Wha- what's for you is, uh, what the council requested. So it includes the decorative def- definition as well as allowing it as a ground cover. So that's what's before you is what the council requested.
Okay, so they did not recommend not approving that part.
Yeah, they basically denied that part, correct?
Oh, they did deny that part.
Or recommended denial.
Okay. So what is the council's feelings on that one?
We could have another meeting to, uh. Talk about this.
Well, yeah, it'll be on our regular meeting next week. So if you wanted more opportunity to speak to it, you would have to continue it next week. So I think we have time that we could address it tonight. If anybody has concerns about leaving it in.
My concern is about thirty percent, uh, I didn't look at it yet, but thirty percent, uh, about. You mentioned earlier, is that that the pinpoint when you go out and give a ticket to people is that that thirty percent has to be? That number or, uh, is that something else and you can add that one on top of that, that list?
So the ordinance requirement, this part isn't changing. The, the thirty percent is what's in the ordinance right now. So that's a requirement that, yeah. So for example, someone had just gravel that doesn't meet the ordinance requirements. They need to have some kind of plant material in with the gravel or bark or, you know, whatever kind of ground cover they use.
I remember the last time we talked about thirty percent, but also something else going to be on top of thirty percent, you can give the ticket to the people, not. Only for thirty percent of the grass.
Oh, as far as the, as far as the enforcement goes, yeah, I understand there was a discussion about that. So that's not really an ordinance requirement, more just policy. That if that were the only violation, we wouldn't be doing issuing a citation. But as far as the ordinance goes, I think that part was remaining unchanged.
So they could have thirty percent of green, but then we're talking about the decorative dirt that may be in between the green, like a pathway.
Right.
Right now, that's not allowed. You have to have some mulch or something.
That's correct.
We're saying you can have, as long as it's weed free, you can have this nice dirt.
That's right.
Apparently.
Well, then one of the other examples they showed us was a front yard with just clean dirt. Nothing. But. Clean dirt. So it's whether or not you want to push for that to stay or not. Was it thirty percent or just clean dirt was fine?
So the, as far as the ordinance is concerned, what's, uh, the ordinance is even with the, the dirt as ground cover, you still had to have the thirty percent live plant material. So just. What, what is considered, uh, non-living ground cover, right? Right now it's rock or mulch, bark mulch, but just dirt is not.
Okay, it was my understanding that. Some of the council wanted that picture you showed us, that the whole front yard was just dirt, with zero weeds, zero plants, zero everything. I thought that's what we'd added in. So that's my misunderstanding.
And, and not, that wasn't my recollection, but, uh, maybe, but again, we can certainly make that change if that's the council's direction.
No, I think it was just that visual stuck in my brain, so it's fine how it is.
Ma'am, if I might interject there, the other thing or the nuance that you may have been thinking of or may have some bearing on your conversation is the thirty percent definition. It's not thirty percent. After you plant a couple of plants, it's thirty percent at full growth. The problem with that, of course, is going to be from an enforcement standpoint, which goes back to the why or how we enforce it is. Who knows what full growth is out there from a code enforcement officer's standpoint, which would be great if you were a code enforcement officer, but yeah, that's probably not going to. That's.
One thing that helps along those lines, in the, in the case of like a commercial development. The landscape plans are done by a professional and they show what the, the full maturity is going to be with a homeowner. They're not going to have that.
Right, we're not going to. Probably ever. I was trying to think of some instance where we might have that in a resident, but it would be pretty rare.
Right.
Sure.
Yeah, the only way for an officer would get the. Show me this plant and then. Take a picture of the plant, the app tells you what it is and how big it'll get. But that would be very time consuming, and I don't think our. Enforcement officers have that kind of time. So we may just say, basically, everything grows to about three feet in diameter when it's a perennial. Ground cover. I mean, some go twenty, but. Have a basic of three feet and count that. For mature growth. But.
Yeah, I, I remember that. May I do that?
Yep, I'm good.
I remember the last time we, uh, we talked about it and about, I, I believe that the new color, he, he used a beautiful word, it's a decorated dirt. I remember that. And, and we majority is people, we agree with that. Is that still there?
Yes.
Okay. I want to make sure.
I think the planning commission was concerned that it's difficult to keep weeds, um, in decorative dirt rather than mulch or. Other product. And so that's why they didn't like the decorative dirt.
Yeah.
Well, if they're letting weeds grow, then they're, they're no longer in compliance.
Right.
And there's some people that, that do have their really nice. Dirt with some flowers interspersed. And. My neighbor across the street. On the corner. Dirt with some really nice plants around it and. But no weeds.
So they do have weed with the mix with the grass, but I think they keep red clean and very nice, and I think. There are no reason to give them a secret product instead of people already have not in there. Uh. So it's still there in there?
Yeah.
Decorative, yes.
Mix with weed.
No weeds.
No weeds.
No weeds is all.
Right now, yeah, weeds are not allowed right now.
You tell my yard that.
Well, and there's the misconception, because I just had a conversation with someone that, well, we put down ground cover and then we put on rocks. So we'll never have weeds. And I'm like, dust still blows in, weed seeds grow in. And they still sprout them. So you still have to control it and be on top of it, whether it's. The dirt.
True.
Mulch or the gravel, so. And they figure that out after a year. Okay, any other questions on this one? Okay, we'll move on to our public hearings for next week. We have application G P Z three, twenty twenty-three. And this one is Mr. Pastrick as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, uh. Pulling up a presentation here to share. Alright, so this is for property at forty-three oh one west, uh, forty-five seventy south. It's an acre and a half. The, uh, current zoning is, uh, the A-zone or agricultural zoning. And the general plan is for large lot residential, and the request here is to change the zoning to R one eight and the general plan to low density residential. So you can see from this image that, uh, property surrounded by homes. Uh, this particular, uh, parcel, um, you can see kind of bisects, uh, an older home that was built in the seventies, a larger home there. And so it's just the property in red that's, uh, being requested for the rezoning to R one eight. You'll notice, and this, uh, is, um. Important point in one of the next slides, there's this home to the north where you have this kind of pie shaped or not pie shaped, but wedge shaped lot here to the north. That's important on an upcoming slide. I'll show here in a minute. This just shows again surrounding zoning. So you've got the, kind of the light green is the, the agricultural zoning, the R one eights, the yellow, it's pretty much around, around this property. Just a plat map. Uh, this is the concept line. So I mentioned, there's that home to the north on that wedge shaped lot and, or, and so what they're proposing to do is incorporate that lot into the subdivision. So that home would remain, but instead of being wedge shaped, now it would be more of a typical kind of gear shaped lot. And then there would be four new building lots, assuming the zoning is approved. Uh, here on the west end, and then this, uh, portion of the, the east portion of the property would remain with that existing home. That's, uh, already on kind of that eastern portion of the property. So then, uh, four new building lots with this lot one eleven being for the existing home that's, um, on the north end. Just some pictures here. This is actually taken from the east edge of the adjoining property looking to the west. So there's a, an access to the existing home there. Just another, uh, view a little bit closer to the house. This is taken from the north side of the property, looking to the south. You can see one of the, uh, outbuildings there. This is the home that's, uh, directly north, so this would become part of the subdivision. But again, this, um, home is, is already there. And then just looking west along the, the street that's along the north side there. And leave, uh, just one more shot here. That's, again, looking back towards the house and then the, one of the outbuildings that's next to it. And that, uh, that summarizes this item.
Okay. Turn it to the council for any questions? Yep.
So then. Hmm. The forty-three eighty-five, that'll be a public street, but that little offshoot, it's, it's, I'm assuming already a private street and it will remain that way?
So right now, if we go to the aerial image. Um, the driveway is coming from this street, the stub street to the east. They were wanting to, uh, maintain a, another, you know, driveway from this cul-de-sac here, so be. Uh, like a flag lot, if you will. Um. And so it'd basically be a second access point to that house. That's, yeah, that's proposed, right? If I can get my cursor working here right here.
And that would be a private street.
So we, we have considered those as part of, it could be part of the lot. Uh, so it wouldn't necessarily be, again, similar to what we've done with flag lots where the, the driveway is considered part of the lot and not considered a private street that's owned. Uh, by a group of people, but in this case would be just that one lot owner.
So it would be like their driveway into lot one oh four.
Correct.
So it'd be part of lot one.
Right, so in, in essence, it's like a flag lot. So, um, we, um, the prohibition the council did a while back on private streets was more when you had a, a group, uh, you know, two or more people that were involved in, like an association. But where it was just a, an individual driveway to, for, for a single lot, that that's just considered part of the line, not a private street.
Is there a reason this couldn't be zoned, uh, residential estates?
It could be. It's possible. Um, the applicant here hasn't like laid out a, a, a subdivision for that to see if. Like how that would affect the, you know, the, the shape of the lots and the, the roads. So I think it's possible. It just, I'm not sure what the end result would be as far as like how it would lay out.
And we allow for these zone changes. For less than three acres or less than a few acres?
Less than two.
Okay, and this one falls in one point.
Five.
Five.
Has this always been two lots?
Not exactly sure at what point this came to be two lots. Um, that's something I can look into to find out the timing of that. But, uh, I don't, I don't believe it was recent. I believe it's been this way for a long time, but I, but again, I can, I can track that down through the county and figure out when the subdivision occurred or when that split occurred, if it's always been that way or. It was more recent.
Because do they usually let them go through a house?
To, today, no, but again, this, this was built, it was built under the county's jurisdiction, so, um. It, it could have been, it would have been different rules back then for sure.
Okay.
So does it go state, um, is one option, and our sustainability zone would be another option?
Would, uh, would be, yes.
Um, or we do R one eight. Because it's less than two acres.
Yeah.
Which, what they're suggesting. I'm just wondering if we can add some of our sustainability items to development agreement. Um. Since they're getting. R one eight. If we get solar ready or, you know, some of those easy things that a developer could do. Uh, where we feel like. We feel good about going to R one eight. Oh, what's the thought?
Uh, I didn't mention, but there is a development agreement here that's proposed that would have our housing standards that weren't affected up until twenty twenty-one, which were the higher standards we had before this, the state required us to make a change there.
So they are building to our former standards?
Correct, that's.
Okay.
Proposing.
Anything else? Hey, any information about the development agreement other than? They're just complying with everything. Anybody have any more questions on that one?
I did have one quick clarification. So, uh, Mr. Lehman, who's, uh, watching, texted me and said the line, uh, that exists through the house was in nineteen eighty, so it's been that way for a long time.
Quite a while. Okay.
We could probably expect. The other side to be developed to a later date.
Possibly, at this point, they haven't.
They don't have an application in there or anything.
Did you have a question?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
You have a question about the timing of this? Um. Uh, I'm a little confused on the calendar. Um. Do we have a, a regular meeting scheduled for the twenty-fifth?
We do not.
Or we would not.
We wouldn't, yeah, but we, don't we do these for two weeks?
Yeah.
We review them for two weeks now.
So we had to schedule on the twenty-fifth, just.
Which, to that point, it's not an ordinance requirement. It's you guys' preference. So if you wanted to switch it, you can switch it.
But I'm, I'm just looking on my calendar and it says that the, the meeting has been canceled.
I'll double check.
That's awesome. But we do have a meeting.
Because of on this one, because of that.
Oh, okay, because of this, yeah, the two.
The two week thing?
Yep.
But you could see it next week if you wanted to.
Yep.
Okay. So is there a desire to move it up?
And. Or no other agenda items for the twenty?
Oh, correct.
We do, we have noticed it. For the twenty-fifth.
We've noticed it for a public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't the public hearing next week?
It's on the twenty-fifth because of the two week.
Oh.
The study, study.
The study.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we could all, I could adjust it.
That's what I say, because.
You can't now, right? Because you just get sent out the notice.
Yeah, it's been sent out.
We probably better keep it to twenty-fifth.
Hey.
There we go.
That's a subtle sad.
Hey. Well, that's a good clarification, and that will apply to the next one as well. We'll have those two on the agenda.
Yeah, just because they both had development agreements tied to them.
Okay. Yeah, and the two weeks was just to give us enough time to really review them and ask as many questions as possible, so. Okay, that works. So we will have a study set, because next week's study session was canceled as well, so we'll put that back on our base calendars and the regular for the next week.
Yeah.
Okay. Angel might have to adjust some things she's already booked me for, but that's okay. All right. Any other questions on this application? All right, so we'll go to our next public. Input, um, and that is G P Z four, twenty twenty-three. And this one was also Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you, Mayor. So another general plan zone change, uh, this involves two properties, uh, at forty-three, forty-four and fifty-eight west, thirty-four south. Both of these parcels are narrow and very deep. You can see, um, on this image here. Uh, and these parcels actually extend from thirty-fifth all the way to, to this point here. The, uh. Right now, the, the southern portion, about roughly the southern third of both parcels is zone C two, so they're already commercial. And then the balance roughly the north two thirds is zoned A, uh, the agricultural zone, and the request here is to be able to expand or extend the C two zoning further north. Uh, to be able to, uh, accommodate a, a new restaurant, and I'll go into more detail here. So just to zoom in a little bit closer and explain what's around or immediately around it. So when you're looking at the two properties in question, you have a rental home on, uh, the existing lot. And then this lot here, uh, was a house, but then, uh, at some point was converted to commercial use, but there's not currently a, a use in it now. We have, um, what is a boarded, uh, boarded, uh, convenience store on the northeast corner of. Forty-fifth West and Thirty-Fifth South, and you have to the east an auto repair business. And then this property here. Is, uh, just a home, just a larger lot, and then you have homes kind of here to the east and on the north. Uh, here's the zoning map. So again, you can see the red is the commercial. And then the, this green is the agricultural zone, and this is roughly the area that they're wanting to expand the commercial zoning into. Uh, this is the restaurant that they're wanting to build, uh, the owners looking to do here. This restaurant actually is in West Valley. It's on Redwood Road, so they're looking to, right now they're leasing, so they're looking for, uh, uh, their own home, if you will, to own here on Thirty-Fifth. Just a floor plan of the restaurant. They also, in addition to the restaurant, wanted to have some additional commercial space behind the restaurant they could lease out. Again, just, uh, basement storage and then a mezzanine as part of this. So there are two concept plans that were submitted. Uh, the first one, so just to orient you here, Thirty-Fifth is on the right-hand side of the screen here. So you have the restaurant here, uh, just close to the street, and then they have these angled stalls in the back. Or on the north end. The reason for those angled stalls where you've got, uh, not angled stalls here more towards the south end is. The code requires, whenever you have a commercial or a parking lot next to either residential use or residential zoning, you have to have a ten-foot. either residential use or residential zoning, you have to have a ten foot setback. Right now, even though this is zoned agriculture on both sides, there's no real residential use on those properties. And so in this concept, which just makes for a little bit better flow of the property, they did a five foot setback for those, for the parking lot there in the north end, which allows them to do more of a, you know, a traditional parking lot with ninety degree stalls. And that's important as we get to the development agreement. Uh, so this just shows the, the properties in question, so you can again here, you can see the flat map that um, these properties are pretty narrow as well as the property to the. So just some pictures here, so this is the property uh to the north that has frontage on fortieth west, so this is looking to the east. Uh, this is the boarded up convenience store that's just to the west. Uh, this is the rental home that's on the west parcel, so this is one of the subject pieces of property. Uh, and then the, the, this uh property right here is the east parcel, so again, used to be a house, but it's converted. And then if we go to um, this is the auto repair business that's directly to the east of, of the subject property. Then this is the commercial property uh on the south side of thirty fifth south, and then another home that's on the south side of thirty fifth, and I believe that's the last image. So with the development agreement, there are two provisions that are proposed. So one eventually, uh thirty fifth south would be widened by U dots, similar to what U dot did between roughly twenty seventh west and fortieth or roughly Bangator, but eventually it would be widened through this section. And so we're including a right away dedication as one of the items in the development agreement. The other would be this issue about the setback uh of the, the parking lot. So the, right now, the development agreement would allow them to reduce that side yard setback for the parking lot to five feet, so going from ten to five feet, which would allow this kind of a layout. But in the end, if the council prefers uh not changing that, then they could just do the angled stall, so they can, they'd still make it work. It just uh doesn't yield quite the same layout and takes up a little bit more space, so. And that summarizes this application.
Okay, any questions from the council?
Is there a restriction on drive through in that area?
There's not, yeah, this is a just C two zoning, no overlay zone, so the drive up would be allowed.
But this is a sit down restaurant?
It is, th- they would have indoor, uh, indoor seating as part of this.
It has drive through too, though, right?
It does, yes.
Is there any benefit to, since we're doing a rezone, to make it a straight line across the other properties, or is it negative for their the other owners? Just, I'm just looking ten years down the road, are we gonna make address this C two? As far as the neighbors to the east and the west?
Um, if, if we wanted to do that, we would need to do that as a separate item, just because they, they've only applied for these two pieces. Now, the city could proactively go in and change zoning on property as a separate application. Um, just my initial thought is that uh if, for example, the owner to the east owns the auto repair business, wanted to expand, they could do that at some future point. Um, but right now, where there's no pending use for those properties, my initial thought would be just, you know, let the owners make that petition. Um, but, but again, if the council directs, that's something we think we'll have to rezone.
Us rezoning it to commercial would substantially increase their property taxes with no potential income, yeah. That would be kind of, no. All right, and then their development agreement? General plan change and then a zoning and then a development agreement, anything?
Right, so the, the two, the two provisions that again would be the, the right away dedication to accomplish or to accommodate future widening by U dot, and the second would be to allow that uh parking lot setback reduction. So again, in this drawing that's on the screen right now, it shows the ten feet, but again, we're talking about that the, on the left side of the screen, the northern part of the parking lot, going from ten feet to five feet, which allowed this type of a layout here.
And then are they gonna put a cinder block wall around this because it's agriculture around?
That, that is a requirement, right, so that's, that's in the code.
Okay. So whether it's ten feet or five feet, if residential is built around here, if people take their big lots to the east and expand and do a subdivision of some sort, they were still protected from the lights shining in their backyards.
Right, so the way the code reads right now is if it's zoned agricultural, res- or residential or has residential use, so any of those three would require the wall, so they have to put a wall now as part of this project, assuming that they move forward.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? And I keep forgetting, you will tell me if, okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then who's presenting this one?
Mr. Jepson.
Okay, we now have our ordinance twenty three twenty eight, and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Jepson for that one.
Yes, Council. So these, there's one simple change, first in our, in our fee schedule, uh, where we've, we've amended the council's request, a third citation from a four hundred dollar fee uh to a five hundred dollar fee. And then pretty much all throughout ten two, this is the establishment of an administrative law board rather than an administrative law judge. Uh, there any questions or want me to go deeper into it?
Any questions from the council? I only had um one note. The city manager chooses the people on the count, on the board with the advice and counsel of the council or approval of the council, and then there was a place in here that they could dismiss. And it didn't say with consent or approval from the council. So I was just wondering if anybody had a concern with that, or if it was fine to just have the city manager do that, or if you wanted to have input.
Mayor Lynn, just for my reference, what, what lines are we looking?
Uh, two thirty five to two seventy, I mean, two forty.
Isn't that the same language we have for most of our positions that are appointed by the, by the manager at the consent of the council?
Uh, I don't want to make it, to an extent, I have to defer to our city manager on that.
It is, I mean, this wasn't written like that by design, I'm pretty sure that's just how it is through most of the boards. But I didn't go back and study it either, so I couldn't speak to all of them particularly.
Yep, that was my only question of the council, if they're good with that or want to change it.
I think that, you know, she brought up a good point.
I think it would be helpful to have the council provide input if there's going to be a dismissal.
Make that change, and everything else I saw was good. Anybody else have concerns? Yeah. All right, thank you. All right, we have um resolution twenty three dash twenty nine, and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Cushing.
Thank you, Mayor. The current ordinance that includes fees for IT services came out at the turn of the century. Um, you can might, you might imagine the way that we collect and distribute data has changed a little bit in the last twenty three years. Um, so those fees are no longer applicable, so what we'd like to do is just greatly simplify that fee structure and just simply uh say that we are following state statute when it comes to grammar requests, which is simply that we take the employee that uh makes the, the least amount, we charge that hourly rate. Um, they can still provide that service.
So there's a lot of different fees that we've had in the past, but now it'll just, instead of having hard paper, it'll just be a disk or.
Yeah, and like, yeah, and that's just, it doesn't happen anymore. If we do distribute uh anything, it's, it's usually electronically, we don't physically give them anything, you know. If they wanted, if somebody did re- ask for a printed map, we would potentially still do that, but it's, it just doesn't happen anymore.
Okay, and then there is, if they want a copy on paper, it's ten cents a sheet.
Yeah, that, yeah, that doesn't really.
It's there, but it's, you don't think anybody will ask for it.
Yeah, right.
Okay. All right, anybody else have questions? I thought it looked like a great move, so.
All right.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to resolution twenty three dash one zero four, that's the one we just know. Mr. Jepson again.
Yes, Council, we put on an RFP for a new administrative law judge to be part of the, obviously, the title ten changes that we are doing. And we've, we took in several applications, met with uh some applicants and decided, came to an agreement with Matt and Stephanie Hanson. Uh, these two are prosecutors, have been prosecutors for years and have experience in doing the LJ things, Matt uh did it for Changer City as well as uh some other cities. And it is our recommendation that we ratify that agreement.
And then is there intention to pack team, one or the other will be there?
Yes, so that gave us the most available dates. Going forward, I don't believe we'll be limiting to, limiting those dates to Thursday, so as we have in the past. Uh, Matt is a prosecutor for Davis County, is his full time job, and he does have jury trials. Stephanie uh works for other, other cities, and the plan is that Matt will likely take the lead uh with Stephanie working as backup if he has a last minute cancellation, that we won't have to cancel dates because we don't have an ALJ available.
Great. Any questions or discussion from the council?
The, this trying to go memory with this, a few months old, we, we, we're gonna have a, a couple of citizens also on the on the board, okay, all right. Do we know where we're at in that process?
Sorry, what's that? In terms of appointment?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have one on, interviewed one other that wasn't interested. Or I should say one that's accepted and one that was not interested.
Great.
All right, thank you. All right, and I'll go to resolution twenty three dash one oh five, and we'll turn the time over to Chief Evans.
This agreement is uh long, I can, I can kind of shorten it up for you. What this is, is with the uh state lands and forestry fire. Um, what this does is we, we have agreed to do certain things, we have training, um, we have equipment, uh, we do some mitigation. With us meeting that, if we need help from the state lands and forestry, we won't get charged. I will give you, for instance, if there was something going on and I needed a water drop from a helicopter, state of Utah provides that. If we don't meet these requirements, we don't sign an agreement, uh, a drop of water is anywhere from three to five thousand dollars that we would have to pay. With us doing this, we sign this cooperative that we're meeting certain things, we're agreeing to do certain things, that's free if we need their help. That's really what it boils down to. I know it's a lot of pages, but if you condense it to me, that's one of those. A- and not just, just water drops, if we, if we needed some of their hand crews and things like that. And, you know, we always forget that on the west bench, we go up a ways, and that's where we would really use their help.
Okay. And as the council for discussion?
Signature and some training, sounds like a very cheap alternative.
Yep.
Inexpensive alternative.
And we've done this agreement for about the last six years.
Okay. All right, seeing no other discussion, thank you. All right, we will now turn the time over to Mr. Johnson for resolution twenty three dash one zero seven for new garbage cans.
Good afternoon, we know you all came out to hear about the garbage cans. We are uh coming to the council to recommend or to request authorization to purchase approximately nineteen hundred new garbage cans. We budget for a certain amount every year, and this falls within that budgeted allocation, and we are purchasing them through a, a national cooperative purchasing, purchasing a COOP that gives us competitive pricing and um they're toter cans and they're durable and, and we like them and uh we're making this request that the council, we hope you will approve.
Okay, turn out the council for any questions?
What happens to an old can when you replace?
Uh, we send it to the, our, our waste hauler recycles them, they recycle plastic.
Just have to take the metal pole out or do you even have to disassemble it at all?
Put it in a can and send it to Ace and they take care of all of it.
Oh, nice.
Axel out, things like that, but.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
We have our consent agenda. Does anybody have questions on those two items? Yeah, you might be back. No questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll now go to our communication portion. And we have U dot here to speak on forty one hundred south of Bangator. And Alex Fisher Willis will be our presenter.
Hi, Council and Mayor, thank you again for having us tonight. Um, we'll start with an update on where we're at with the study, kind of our recap of what we've seen at the neighborhood meetings and public hearings, and you guys heard a lot of the comments two weeks ago at the council meeting, so we're gonna go over two of the main comments that we've received and go into some detail um through those. Um, our team will also be here after the meeting to um talk to the public and any of the council members. Um, we have, we'll have some maps out in the foyer and answer any questions. Um, so the first announcement we have is we have extended the public comment period. It was set to end tomorrow, but we've extended it two weeks and it will end on August second. One, that was to help our team make sure we have enough time to address the comments we've already received. We also received comments requesting an additional time to submit more comments, so we've accommodated that as well. So our plan is still to hopefully release the final document by the end of the summer. Um, but with that two week extension, it may push into the fall a little bit, but for the most part, we're still on schedule. Um, again, I'll remind uh council that we don't have funding until twenty twenty seven for this project, we only have about a third of the funds that we need. Um, our team has also been in the process of prioritizing which interchanges we should construct first with those funds. Um, we're hoping to have that information probably around the same time we release the final document, because we're also addressing all the comments that we can. Um, the neighborhood meetings we held in May, uh, we had twelve meetings total, and we received, or we had over a hundred attendees. We also had the public hearings in June, we had one online, that recording is available online if you have not had a chance to view it. Um, we also have two, we also had two in person public hearings, um, where we had over two hundred attendees um come and talk with our group and submit comments. Um, we have a video that we put online, we've had over fourteen hundred views, that video is in English and Spanish. Um, to date, we've received over a hundred, or at a hundred and seventy comments to date. Um, we've had kind five, we've had about five um overall themes with those comments. Uh, the first is the opposition to the interchange at forty one hundred south, um preferring an overpass instead. The second is actually support for an interchange at forty one hundred south. Uh, we've had uh comments about concerns with the safety of the pedestrian crossings and the shared use path. Um, we've also had some comments regarding design details, uh, so many of those were looking, we've been kind of focusing on forty one hundred south to get the answer to that first, but we are taking time to look at a lot of these design details, um, including the intersection just east of forty one hundred south, uh, by Granger Medical Center. So we're in the works for those, we just haven't quite come to a resolution yet, um, and we also have received several comments in support of the project. So first we'll talk about the forty one hundred south design, um. We've done a lot of research, done a lot of traffic modeling and looking at the impacts to properties and community, both with the interchange option or the overpass option. So just to remind you guys what the interchange option looks like, we will take Bangator Highway underneath forty one hundred south. Again, this will not go all the way down like we see at other locations, it'll go about fifteen feet down, and forty first will have a slight change in elevation just because the water table is so high here, but we have uh moved forward with taking Bangator under. Uh, we do have to relocate the aqueduct at this location. We have to relocate the aqueduct with either design. This is because the aqueduct is seventy-eight inches. It supplies water to over one and a half million people in the valley. We have requirements as well as design restrictions that we have to follow. The Bureau of Reclamation owns the right-of-way for the aqueduct. Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District owns the water in the aqueduct, so we have to follow all of their requirements. We have to, we're not allowed to build it underneath a structure. The pipe itself just can't handle the weight of the structure. We also have to be a certain distance away from the structure, one, just because we have that additional weight. Also, when we construct the structure, we drive piles and that vibration can separate the pipe, so we have to be a certain distance away. And because this aqueduct follows Bangor Highway, they have done tests on the southern sections as they constructed them to get a good idea of what that distance is when they were actually driving piles. So we are fairly confident in this distance away from the abutments that we're showing. We also have a depth restriction. We can't go, we, we can only go to a certain depth because the pipe can only handle so much weight of soil. And Jordan Valley also has requirements on slope. Because Bangor will go like this, we can't have the aqueduct also go like this. It needs to stay kind of at a constant slope. So we, we have a lot of restrictions we have to follow with the aqueduct, which is why we're shifting it west. And you'll see in the next graphic with the overpass option, it's about the same distance. We have to shift to the west because of all these requirements. With the interchange, we also have the shared use path on the west side. We will have forty-one, we will have the shared use path cross underneath forty-one hundred South. Since we're taking forty-one up and over Bangor, it didn't really make sense to put another bridge for the shared use path, which we'll go into more detail here shortly, but that's, that's why we did it at this location. We also have noise walls proposed all four locations of this, uh, forty-one hundred South.
Sorry.
Yes.
So you're proposing a tunnel under forty-one for the pedestrian.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll talk more about the pedestrian crossings after we talk about the interchange.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, if we do not put an interchange in, this would be about the footprint. And like I said, the wa, the aqueduct is still fairly impactful. The abutment for the bridge for forty-one hundred South will be in about the same location, whether we build a interchange or not. So that aqueduct still has to shift to the west and it's still impacting a lot of the properties. With the interchange, we're showing a hundred and nineteen properties being impacted. Sixty-four of those are residential relocations. With the overpass, we're showing eighty properties being impacted. That difference is mostly the partial impacts. And we'd still have five, fifty-five residential relocations just because of the aqueduct relocation. We also looked at traffic data to see how this would impact not just the intersections on Bangor Highway, but also the intersections along four thousand west and thirty-six hundred west. So we looked at traffic volumes, vehicle delay, queue lengths. And we also have some other considerations we've, we've been looking into. And we've received comments about why are we putting an interchange at forty-one hundred South on Bangor when we don't have them at two fifteen and I fifteen? That is correct. We don't have them on those corridors. However, we do have them on Mountain View, do have an interchange in Mountain View Corridor, and we do not have one at forty-seven hundred South. Part of the reason that was constructed that way was, one, the original alignment of Mount, of Mountain View Corridor was supposed to turn. That changed in the design, but the original turn did not allow for an interchange. Also, at forty-seven hundred South, there's a lot of utilities, including railroad, that make an interchange at that location very challenging. So we want to connect that east-west corridor along forty-one hundred South from Bangor to Mountain View Corridor. So that's one of the benefits. We also, just looking at Bangor Highway itself, just for consistency along that corridor, we do have interchanges about every mile right now. The only spots we don't are where we have large curves and, again, you can't really put an interchange on a curve without some other design issues. So we're, we're keeping consistent with the corridor as well. We've had a couple other considerations, but those are kind of the high level, making that east-west connectivity. Oh, also two fifteen, that's another example. So we are adding a frontage road along two fifteen southbound. It'll start about forty-one hundred South. You will not be able to get off or on I fifteen at forty-one hundred South. But we're extending the forty-seven hundred South off-ramp. And there will be a new connector road. If you know where the old American Express building is, there's a signal there. There will be a new connector road there, so that will tie into the connectivity. You'll be able to access two fifteen from forty-fourth or forty-seventh, a little bit easier with that option. So that continues that east-west connectivity along forty-one hundred South. So for traffic volumes, we looked at what the peak hour traffic is gonna look like without an overpass or without an interchange at forty-seven hundred South and forty-three, or thirty-four, sorry, thirty-five hundred South. And what we saw is a nine sixteen percent increase, which doesn't really feel like a lot, but that's actually over seven hundred vehicles per hour added to the already congested traffic. This area is already pretty close to capacity, so when you add that much traffic, it, it does build up pretty quick. We also increased vehicle delay. In the AM peak, we're showing a nine percent increase, and then PM peak, we're showing a fifty-three percent increase. And that's just the amount of time vehicles are stuck in traffic, how long it takes to get through this area. We do equate a user cost to this. This is a metric that is fairly common in traffic studies. We take kind of an average value based off of the amount of cars and trucks on the road. And that individual user cost for sitting in traffic all that additional time. And what we calculated was just in the year of twenty fifty, it'd be an additional forty million dollars of user cost. Between twenty twenty-five and twenty fifty, that's a cumulative amount of eighty-nine million dollars. So that's, that's not cost that you don't incur, that's cost that the users incur, and we try to limit those impacts as much as we can.
I have a question on that. So I, I see that this would impact people that might have exit at forty-one hundred South. When now they have to exit at thirty-fifth or forty-seventh, if it's an overpass.
Yes.
Was any consideration in this calculation made for people that are going east-west? Who now can, if, if there's an overpass, wouldn't be impacted by the, the intersection at all. I mean, they're saving time now by going east and west.
Yes, that was taken into consideration. I don't know, Ivan, if you have more you want to add to that, but that, that was included in the model. Yeah. There's, there's just, um, there, what we're seeing is there's more traffic moving to thirty-fifth and forty-seventh, right?
Right.
So it's not just the current users using thirty-fifth and forty-seventh, but also those users shifting. So yes, there is a small benefit to those staying on forty-first, but really it's a big impact to, to user groups that are being shifted. Um, we also looked at the intersections. Like I said, we're looking at fortieth west and thirty-sixth west as well. And during the PM peak period, we have three intersections that fail. One is at thirty-five hundred South and thirty-sixth West. The others are on forty-seven hundred South, one at Bangor and one at four thousand west. And that means that LOS mean, mean E means you're sitting through multiple signal cycles, not getting through. And yeah, if you have to do that every once in a while, that's probably not a big deal, but when you have all that traffic plus the additional seven hundred cars, and you have to do that every night on your commute home from work, it, it does add up, which is what accounts for the user cost from the previous slide. We also looked at turning movements. This increases a lot of the left and right turning movements away from forty-first on to thirty-fifth and forty-seventh. Um, what we saw is a fifty percent increase in the morning peak and a fifty-five percent increase in the PM peak. And we also looked at queue lengths. Um, this is showing thirty-five hundred South. The light blue indicates what the queue length would look like if we did have an interchange at forty-one hundred South. The orange is if we did not have an interchange at forty-one hundred South. And this is in the twenty fifty PM peak. So as you can see, just, just in the PM time period, all of these queue lengths are getting substantially longer. And that's just because all of that additional traffic is trying to get through these intersections with the designs that we are currently laying out. But a forty-seventh, forty-seventh has even more substantial delays. For forty-seven hundred South, what we found is the delay from Bangor Highway to the east is over, or the queue is about half a mile long. So you're, you're not only sitting in traffic for multiple cycles, but it's a half a mile long of cars waiting to get on or off of Bangor Highway. We also have backing on fortieth west and thirty-six hundred west, which is substantially longer. And coming eastbound on forty-seven hundred South, we're also seeing backing as well. So we have, we have quite a bit of queuing. We're also seeing queuing on Bangor Highway, which is always a dangerous factor when you have a freeway corridor. If you can't get vehicles off of, at least queuing onto the on-ramp, if it's extending beyond that on-ramp, you, you increase the risk for high-speed accidents. And those vehicles are not able to get off the off-ramp because of all that additional traffic on forty-seven hundred South. So with that, um, right now, you dot still feels pretty comfortable with going with the preferred alternative because of the impacts of the traffic, not just on Bangor, but also on the surface streets. And yes, there are less impacts to property owners, but there's still a substantial amount of impacts to property owners in the area because of the aqueduct. Um, so at this point, I'd like to open it up to discussion for the council and mayor, if you have any questions regarding the traffic study. I might have to have dust, Ivan or Dustin come up to answer some of the specific questions with traffic or design. But want to open it up for discussion with you guys now.
Okay, thank you. Give it to the council.
Let's guess your traffic study was after thirty-one was decided to be an overpass, not an intersection, right?
Yeah, the traffic model takes into account everything we have in our preferred alternative. It also takes into any, everything. The twenty fifty model takes into account everything being built out in the long-range transportation plan. So that includes Mountain View Corridor being constructed. Two fifteen has the frontage roads in the long-range plan and a couple of those other scenarios. So that's considering full build-out in the long-range plan, not just Long Bangor Highway.
You're talking about the, you, you use the word toner earlier. You said you're gonna say, you're gonna talk more about it or explain more about it to us. What is it?
The pedestrian crossings? We'll get to that as soon as we, I want to make sure we have everything answered at the interchange first, before we move forward to the pedestrian.
I'm a little too fast, huh?
Yeah, you're good. I know it's a hot topic, so.
Right. Any other questions about the on-off?
Just a question. On twenty-seven in Mountain View, there's an on-ramp and an off-ramp. Is that a possibility of a one side having?
So we haven't looked at that specifically at forty-seven, forty-one hundred South. I think with the traffic volumes, we're seeing both directions. That's probably not ideal. I don't know, Ivan, if you have any thoughts on the models that you've been working with.
So Ivan, will you come to the mic, please? And give us your name.
Yeah, Ivan Hooper. Traffic for Mount, or for Bangor. Yeah, so forty-first South, we don't have super directional volley, volume, so I guess we maybe could reduce some of that traffic impact by having ramps in just one, just one side. Generally speaking, we like to have full, full access so that people, if they come off, that, you know, one way they can get back on wherever, you know, just that full access and that flexibility. The Mountain View situation was really due to the proximity to two oh one, where it was too close to feasibly put ramps on the north side. So it was driven more by geometry than by traffic.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey.
We see if Dan has anything to add to it.
Sure.
Uh, would you like commentary or?
Commentary.
I mean, really, I'm grateful to this you got team for, for this work that they've done. They spent the last two weeks putting together a lot of data that really wasn't analyzed. We, we, in this process, in all of the study that we've done of this interchange, of, of this system, we never contemplated forty-one hundred South not having access to Bangor Highway. And, and still wouldn't recommend that either, I mean, especially given the traffic data that they've produced. It, it's, it's definitely, I'm grateful that we're going through this, this process. And Alex and her team have done a great job of, of looking at everything. And, and I think that a thorough analysis is good, so. Have you need to add us in that, I guess?
Thanks, Dan.
Okay. If I can move on to the next.
Okay, so the next topic's the shared use path. And as Dan mentioned, we've been working hard on forty-one hundred South. So we're still working on the shared use path options. Um, so I'm gonna walk you guys through what we have laid out, why we laid it out, where we did, why we chose the under crossings that we chose. And then we'll just open it for discussion on, really, we want your feedback on not just concerns, but ideas on what we could do to still provide this east-west connectivity that everybody's gonna be comfortable with. So, um, again, we have the shared use path along the west side of the corridor. We have three under crossings that have been called out with concern. One, as I mentioned before, is at forty-one hundred South. One is at thirty-nine seventy South. And the other is near Granger High School. And that one will tie into the North Jordan Canal Trail back to thirty-sixth West and Lancer Way. Um, the shared use path will follow the UDOT spec of a minimum of twelve-foot wide path with two-foot wide shoulders on each side, so a minimum width of sixteen feet. Any crossing will also be a minimum width of sixteen feet. If this is an under crossing, it'll be a minimum of ten feet tall. So these are fairly large openings. They're not gonna be small six-by-six box culverts, but they'll be fairly large units. We did, oh, we didn't get the updated slides. Hold on, we had it, we had a slight change in slides at the last minute, so. You're good. While we get that pulled up. We did look at over crossings, and I have a picture of one of the over crossings on Bangor at seventy, seventieth South. And I don't know if you guys have seen that one, but it's got a pretty substantial zigzag to get up. Just from experience and counts that you dot has done, also working with some of the school districts and active transportation professionals, we have learned that crossings like that are less appealing than crossings underneath that are flat, just because people on foot or on bikes or pushing strollers don't want to go up a big trail like that. They'd rather just stay on a flat surface. So that was one of the reasons we went forward with these under crossing options at these locations. Okay, Katie, if you have that, I can just jump forward if.
I don't show that I received the second.
The comment on, you mentioned that, you know, people don't want to go up. It's more favorable, but there, there are worse things than going up.
Yeah.
A couple ramps, and that's what the concern is, I think, for the tunnels.
Yep.
Is what, uh, those could bring.
Yeah, and that's, I guess, before we jump into the actual design, we can kind of talk about that. So we actually, we have team members that are doing a lot of research on security and safety of different types of crossings for pedestrians. Whether it's an under crossing and over crossing, if it's, they have, I mean, there's ones where you can kind of put it on the outside of a freeway. So you're next to the freeway versus having a separate tunnel next to it. Um, so we're doing a lot of research on that just to see what, what is the, the security issues and what is the efficiency of use? What, what's more likely to be utilized by pedestrians? Because we want to make sure if we build something, it's gonna get used. We want it to be safe and secure, but we want it to be appealing as well. So we're, we're looking at all of these factors. And we'll continue to look at all these factors as we go through. Even, we've actually included it in the environmental document as a commitment to work with the city. I can't remember the title, but it's Step ten, is that what it is? Yeah. Make sure that during design, they actually have to work with that division to make sure whatever's in place is safe, secure, and appealing. So.
In the study, these tunnels, are you going?
Sir, sir, this is not a public. Sorry, we'll have a half hour after to speak with you. You bet.
Speaking forever, I'm not sure.
Flash drive would be awesome.
Let's just do flash drive, that'll work.
My email's just not.
Technology and last-minute changes, sorry. A lot of this, especially the traffic data, was hot off the press this morning, so we're trying to get this all set up and I just don't know what I can unplug, because there's, all the ports are full. Would it be better to give it to one of you?
Are you? You have, you gotta plug in.
We have a flash drive. I just don't know which USB I can unplug, because they're all full. Don't want to disconnect something I shouldn't.
Oh, yeah, we've got them all plugged.
Oh yeah, we've got them all plugged in, no.
I did just get it.
That'll be better.
You drop it in there.
You've done me right when I.
Okay, thanks, sorry about that, guys.
I can go full screen.
Yeah, perfect. And I'll just kinda skip through what we've already walked through.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so here's the example of the crossing, like I mentioned, it's got the big zigzag and, um, just like I said, what, what we've heard and have experienced is people are more likely to wanna stay on a flat crossing if possible. So at forty-one-hundred South, um, this top image, you can see that, the, this kind of the overhead view, the trail would go underneath forty-one-hundred South. Uh, this crossing would be approximately a hundred and forty feet long. From the north-looking southeast, um, this kind of the, the Granger Medical Center, you can also get that view coming underneath. If you're standing on the trail looking south, um, you can see all the way through it, and that was one of the main goals, we wanted to make sure it's visible all the way through. And on all of these, um, crossings, we wanted to make sure there was a per- a place for a vehicle to park, say, a police officer or even parents watching their kids, whatever, um, can park at the end of the crossing and see all the way through, just to monitor activity. Couple reasons we chose to go under with this option was, one, we did not want to have a grade crossing on forty-one-hundred South with the shared-use path. Um, there's just enough traffic and it's close enough to the interchange that would cause a lot of issues, not just for the pedestrians and cyclists, but for forty-one-hundred South themselves. Um, because we're taking Bengeter under, we also wanted to make sure we kept that viewscape that we're working so hard to maintain. And if we were to do a pedestrian structure over forty-one-hundred South with Bengeter under, it would actually end up being a taller structure cuz forty-first is coming up a little bit, so it'd end up being taller than the structure if we just put Bengeter over in the first place. So we have a couple different reasons for keeping it there. Um, this is the shortest under-crossing that is in the preferred alignment. And, um, again, they'll be all well-lit and, uh, visible all the way through.
So we have, we have at-grade crossings at forty-seventh and two fifteen and thirty-fifth and two fifteen, right?
Yes, sorry, yes, yes.
So why couldn't we do that here? I mean, two fifteen's really busy, forty-seventh is really busy.
So because this is a shared-use path, it's a little bit different requirements, not just a sidewalk. Um, and so we, we wanna keep that as great separated as possible, like we do on Mountain View corridor. Um, along the rest of Bengeter, our preferred alignment has over-crossings. Um, so it's thirty-first, thirty-fifth, we actually have over-crossings going over those streets. The only street that we have an at-grade crossing proposed is eighteen-twenty South, and even that one, we've already received comments asking us to make that grade separated.
I would prefer not grade separated than have a tunnel.
Okay, let's, well, we'll continue that discussion, so. Um, the second crossing we'll discuss is this thirty-nine-seventy, um, this is the one we've received the most comments on. And this is the second longest crossing, I believe it was a hundred and eighty feet.
When you mean that one hundred and eighty feet, is that at the entrance of the tunnel or?
Yes, yeah, from, from the edge of the Bengeter to the edge of Bengeter, that, where you're underneath the surface. Um, this location was selected for a couple reasons, in fact, let me go back. Um, first, we were trying to get pedestrians out of the interchange. Um, pedestrians crossing through a spooky interchange and cyclists crossing through a scary interchange, um, causes a lot of issues. There's just a lot of contact points with vehicles, there's a lot of free right turns, and it's also just a long crosswalk for people to get across. So we're trying to get them out of that interchange. Um, we were also working with West Valley's Active Transportation Plan, currently, the Active Transportation Plan shows a crossing at thirty-eight-hundred South. So we're trying to accommodate getting that east-west connection with the city's active plan. We're also working with the school district, there are currently two schools that have boundaries in this area. Valley View Junior High School currently crosses Bengeter and it's within their safe, um, walking zone. They do cross over forty-one-hundred South right now with that pedestrian structure. Pioneer Junior High currently buses from the west side, but it's actually within distance that they could walk if they had a safe route, but they avoided having those students. The boundary's actually at forty-first, and because the crossing's on the south side, they didn't want the students to have to cross forty-first, go up and over, and then cross back over to get to the elementary school. So, um, we're just looking at multiple options of getting pedestrians and cyclists safely across Bengeter Highway at this location. Um, here's a couple different graphics showing what that would look like. Um, this would be at the edge, the cul-de-sac that it would intersect with, there would be a trail connecting to the shared-use path as well into the cul-de-sac, so that neighborhood has access. And again, it'd be at elevation, so you'd be able to see all the way through. From the east side, um, these graphics don't show the road, but you can actually park in the street and look through the tunnel. So again, we'd have the ability for police officer to watch and make sure it's, um, just watch for the activity in the crossing.
I'd drive my child down to the tunnel, let him out of the car, and watch him walk through the tunnel.
If you wanted to, yes, that, that would be an option.
Doesn't seem like that's a good use of my time. Uh, I've lived next to one of these tunnels in California, went under I five. And, and by next, I mean, you left the tunnel and you were in my yard. I never felt safe crossing under that tunnel.
So we'll, we'll.
Wife would drive a, two miles around.
To go around.
School on the other side of the freeway.
Okay. So we, we, we propose these options to hopefully make sure we're getting use out of these crossings. And we're open for discussion on other alternatives.
I'm gonna drive them to the tunnel, I might as well drive them to where they're going.
The third location is near Granger High School.
Listening.
I, I am listening, sir, I, I just wanna get through the presentation so we can finish the, the, um, we, we can start the discussion.
And we're trying to keep up with you with our slower ears.
Okay, sorry, I will slow down. Um, the, the third location we're looking at is near the high school. And this one, we, we worked with the high school directly with the school district as well. Um, a big part of that is getting the students out of the intersection. When we did our walk audit, we were at thirty-five-hundred South when school got out, we were watching the students walk across Bengeter Highway, and it's, it's terrifying. And it.
If you couldn't build an overpass there.
And, and if we put them in the interchange, it'll be the same situation, it'll be another challenge. And because we are dealing with high school students, we wanna make sure it's an easy route, because they're gonna find the shortest path possible, cuz they're high school students. So we, um, wanted to find ways to tie into the Lancer Way bicycle system. And the North Jordan Canal Trail has been an outline trail across the valley for a shared-use path. Um, so we coordinated with them as well, and this is why we tied in at this location. To tie into North Jordan Canal, right near the high school, and then back to thirty-six West and Lancer Way. Um, again, just some of the graphics we put together to demonstrate, from the surface street, it's the same elevation, you can see all the way through. And, um, we, we received a lot of comments about the underpass near Hunter. Um, and I, I can see why there are some concerns there, so we definitely want to take all of these concerns into consideration, but more than that, might help generating ideas on what other options we can come up with to get these, especially at the high school students across Bengeter Highway. So with that, um, open for discussion, we'll take any comments, we've got Katie and Ryan here jotting as much as they can. And, um, we'll take it forward and continue doing our research and hopefully come up with some proposals that work for the community.
Okay, thank you. Turn it to the council for discussion.
I think, uh, the first, my, my big thing is, well, there's a couple things. Kids, kids walk across Bengeter now, right now, and I, I see them every morning. Um, and it's going to get better with an overpass. There'll still be, they're, they're still gonna have to walk across thirty-fifth to the on-and-off ramps sections, just like they do at two fifteen and forty-seventh and thirty-fifth. And I think you talk about usage, that, that's going to get used, whereas, man, I wouldn't send my kids down to a tunnel. And Dawn's wife wouldn't go through the tunnel.
No.
Um.
She won't let him go through the tunnel.
Didn't let me go either, I had to drive all the way around to my employment that was on the other side of the tunnel.
So, and, and I, I'm sure the tunnels are really expensive, and why would we spend all the money for this tunnel that none of us want or are going to use?
Also, what I remember is that when Chad was killed on thirty-first South and Bengeter, because they couldn't see him in the crosswalk because of the way Bengeter was constructed on a right turn line. It took the Chad ladies, uh, several years to get that overpass, and they were told, we can't build an overpass. It's too long a span to build an overpass. And now we've got them all up and down Bengeter. So, has the technology improved that much in the last twenty years? That we can now build overpasses, and if so, why don't we build overpasses instead of putting in tunnels that can get closed on?
And if, if overpasses are preferred option for the city, we're, we're, we definitely are willing to still consider looking at that, because.
Preferred option, I think you can hear that.
That's, that's why I wanted to have the open discussion, um, the overpasses do have some other design constraints that cause other challenges. Um, it, they do cause maintenance challenges if they're like the one that I showed you, um, with the zigzaggy, um, the.
I see people on it all the time.
Yeah, they get used, but they do have maintenance challenges, and we did receive some comments about the particular structure at thirty-one-hundred South. Um, there's a group of students that don't use it during the winter, because it's icy, it's, it's hard to.
You said you're gonna maintain, it'll be icy going under an underpass, so.
So we, like I said, we're just looking at various options, so if an overpass at Granger and thirty-nine-seventy is desired, we definitely can talk about that. Um, forty-one-hundred South, we do have some other constraints with that, like I said, it's because we worked to take Bengeter under forty-one-hundred South in coordination with the city. Um, it just kinda seems to going the other direction if we're building another overpass over it, so we need other alternatives to get people safely across forty-one-hundred South. And that's not just people using the shared-use path, there's, that's also within the junior high's school walking zone. So we, we wanna make sure that we're maintaining a safe crossing forty-one-hundred.
And is it Valley Junior High, it's the junior high for forty-one?
Yeah.
Hmm, it's quite a ways away. So, I don't know, I don't see that as a hurdle for me.
Yeah.
You say that, Scott, do you mean, what do you mean, are you saying that that tunnel's okay?
No, I don't think, um, that crossing is a concern for the junior high kids. If you're east of Bengeter, you're going to Valley Junior High, if you're west of Bengeter, you're probably going to Kennedy. Does that make sense?
Unless you special permitted, and then. Yeah, they know they're gonna take you, when they special permit you, so.
Does that make sense?
Well, I, I don't know that's my neighborhood, I don't have a school.
I don't either, but that's my neighborhood, and I know that, I'm, I'm just west of forty, or east of fortieth, west of fortieth. I'm right around fortieth. And, and all the kids in my neighborhood go to Kennedy.
Yeah, yeah, but what about those kids?
West of fortieth.
I mean, east of fortieth.
I, I believe that's the boundary for Valley, I, I know it, yeah, I believe that's the boundary for Valley View.
Valley Junior.
Valley Junior, yes, sorry, get him, I'm, had a lot of different schools we've looked at lately.
Oh, I did wanna say, uh, thank you so much, thank you for, you know, working with us over the years and grateful for that. But, uh, Turner was one of the critical points, uh, people here were concerned about, uh, Turner, so maybe to make the adjustment and work with our city in general. Make it a safe place for everyone.
Yeah, definitely, that's, that's, we're, we're open to any suggestion, any thoughts. Um, I, I think we have some tentative plans that we could look at for the ones at Granger and thirty-nine-seventy, like I said, forty-one-hundred South is one that um, we, we definitely wanted additional discussion with the city on, since we worked with the city to get Bengeter under. We want a grade-separated crossing for the shared-use path, how are we gonna make that work? So, um, let's keep the discussion going, if you guys have thoughts tonight, great, if not, we, we can come back and continue talking about it.
Thank you.
It seems like it's more than just the junior high for that crossing of forty-one-hundred South. I mean, this is gonna be a shared-use path that a lot of people are gonna be going along, riding their bikes, walking along Bengeter there, when they build that trail.
Again, if it's a tunnel, I don't wanna go down there, so. And then, I mean, how much security does it take, you know, for a catwalk and overpass, zero? How much does it take for a tunnel? We don't know yet, but I bet you it's more.
That's part of the research we're doing.
What did you say?
That's part of the research we're doing.
We said our kids were special permitted at Kennedy because of Bengeter.
Okay.
So they were supposed to go to Valley.
So there's a little sliver there.
And I know she lived in that house when she was in junior high, and she went to Valley, through the field.
Do you have other tunnels that go into a residential neighborhood?
We, I know we have them along the trails, I'm not familiar enough with all of them in the valley, I know we've got some on, down in Utah County, we've got some off of Legacy, I don't know if we have any that go directly into, I mean, there's the one on, um, Mountain View Corridor by Hunter Park.
And have they had issues with?
Yeah, I get a lot of complaints on that one. And that's the concern, because that one has been quite a problem for that area out there.
Yeah, I'm really worried about those tunnels that go right into a residential.
Yeah.
Neighborhood.
Yeah.
I don't know if that makes any sense.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Okay, thank you guys for your time, um, if you do have any other ideas on what we could do, especially at forty-first, but the other two locations as well, please don't hesitate to reach out. Let us know, um, and we'll be here after to answer any questions as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then will you take that second presentation and email it to the council, please? Just to have it for reference. Okay. Um, we'll now go to our council calendar, were there any concerns associated with that? Hey, um, any potential future agenda items?
We talked about pulling a drive again and speed bumps.
Sure.
And discussed that. Um, the citizens there would like a copy of the traffic study, I don't know if that's possible. And then also, they're willing to pay for it, if we're willing to do it, so.
All about the speed bumps, yeah. Okay.
There was an alternative that you had put.
Oh, you have the signal signs?
Signal signs, maybe, what that option would look like.
It just tells me how fast I'm going, gives me a target that would.
Well, and some, yeah, try to some, try to get it as tall as, or as high as I can.
Beat my last score.
We've had people complain that that increases the speed, not decrease it, but for rule followers, it helps you stay under.
Yeah.
For the rebels, it's just an encouragement. So do you want that to be brought back in a communication item?
Um, well, you mentioned it, you might think, talk about the criteria of traffic studies for speed bumps, so maybe we can review that here and see if there's some. Maybe we can review that here and see if there's some. The, because Palmer is next to two schools. You have Kennedy Junior High, you've got Academy Park.
Right.
And it backs up to that. I mean, that, that really ought to get more than, I think it was. Five points or something. It ought to get more than five points for being that close to a school.
And was there anything in the, in the point structure that took into account accidents that have occurred?
Yeah.
Like the people driving onto other people's yards or taking out, taking out their trees.
I'm not that sure that that's on the.
Is that on the?
Sheet.
No, but I'm not also sure. I mean, we'd go look into it. I'm not sure how readily available that information is going back. We could set like a timeframe.
Yeah.
It was like the last year or two years.
They were saying they had two in the last year.
Right.
And I think that should be part of the consideration, if we can gather the data.
Yeah. So can we put that on for, you want more than a, you want a presentation then with?
And discuss.
Talk about the study. Okay. We got that? Anything else?
Uh, I had one.
Okay.
It's not necessarily a future agenda item per se, but it is some. Direction or action I need from the council. So we've been working on this library project for relocating it for a number of years and there have been various. Proposals forwarded over that time. And one of those has been going to the uh, Valley Fair. I know they. Wish we'd quit calling it mall, so I tried to do that. Um, and that is the preferred. Uh, from the staff standpoint, or the best option, I should say, that we've been able to get. All the parties to agree to over the last uh, couple of years. And it's been sit, considered a couple of times, so it didn't make it through the first time. The second time now, we're there on board. The mayor uh, of Salt, of Salt Lake County is willing to endorse that and forward that, but she. Um, has some question as to what the level of support is at the council level from the city. So I'd like to have some. Uh, action, you know, whether that's a phone call from the mayor or the council, whether it's a letter or you have you sign, whether it's. Direction to me to do it, whether it's a resolution, um, any of those would work. We do need to have it. Uh, from a time standpoint, as soon as we can get it, because for whatever reason, they're ready to make a decision within the next week or two, so. We need that.
So do you want to bring that back as a communication next week with the direction or the pros and cons and?
I can give you the pros and cons right now.
Okay.
Um, they're really centered around two things. I mean, there's a lot of variations, but the, the two items that they center around are. One, from a economic development standpoint and health and future of Valley Fair, that's. Uh, something that's been presented to, I believe, all of the council members and the current owner. Uh, owners prefer that. They think that'll bring vibrancy and, and uh, help to that area for. Current as well as future development. We've seen that borne out with the replacement of Mervens, replacement of Zions. And the uh, change in focus, so to speak, as to what's going on with the mall. So from that standpoint, it's a development and owner and staff preferred alternative. The other reason we support that is from uh, dealing with transciency, homeless issues, that sort of thing. We get some. Some level of cooperation from a security standpoint with the library, but the library system, I should be more specific. But not really. And the current location is horrible for. Uh, that kind of activity, the, the library staff, to put this gently, doesn't discourage it, let me put it that way. And so it's a problem there. And the other location which the county has considered, which is the rec center over on Redwood. Has exactly the same problem or would if they um, chose to put the library over there. We would definitely oppose both of those uh, locations from a recommendation standpoint, but we, but we believe that. Looking at it at the mall would help that situation. It wouldn't eliminate it, but it would help it because. The mall ownership is there. You have security on site. It's farther away from the, the. The normal transiting routes for that sort of activity. So it would be help, more helpful from that standpoint as well. Um, I might also say, just, and again, there are lots of variations. Those are the two main points. Um, variation on one of those points is the library system itself has said they don't prefer the current location. It's too small. Access isn't good, that sort of thing. So that's been a longstanding. Piece of uh, information or preference from then. I'm not sure where that extends to from the actual county staff as opposed to the county. The library staff that doesn't refer. There are other things we can talk about, but those are the two main.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mark, I had a call with Mark. He called me a couple of weeks ago. Mark Nord, um, and I gave my opinion and I'll voice it here. Um, but I'm in favor of the, of the rec center. I think there's some synergy that a library could have next to a rec center. And then also I'm, I'm not thrilled with the parking already at Valley Fair. Add another.
Another.
Library, uh, add the library there with, with, but also exacerbate that even further, so. That's.
So reiterating on the rec center point, the rec center sits right in the middle of one of the highest concentration of. Uh, homeless and transciency activity that we have right now. Whether that's coming from the men's shelter across from the river, whether it's the various businesses that they're attracted to on the thirty fifth and Redwood corner. It also is gonna be exacerbated here, at least in the short term, in the upcoming year as we have a temporary shelter located. In the formerly, uh, or the former state liquor store. So again, we've had years of data showing. We examine this on a weekly basis where the transciency activity happens. We actually believe that a library located in the rec center area would contribute to that. It wouldn't help it make it worse. So again, we don't recommend that location.
Yes.
When I was on the, first on the council, I served on the rec center advisory board. And they have more activities going on at that center, or they did at that time. Than they could handle in the center itself. You know, food, uh, distribution every week, uh. Or they had to actually do it out of trucks because they couldn't put any of the food in the rec center because they were using all the area there. So I don't think there's any room in that rec center for a library. They build a new. Building somewhere uh, close to it. Uh, my preference would be Valley Fair, because, yeah, parking is sketchy. I don't know how to get around the roads and the. Non-painted stalls and everything else, but I use Valley Fair a lot more than. Most, uh, I think a library there would be very advantageous.
Yeah, I, I think I go a similar with Dawn. Um, the thing is, uh. We need to have a library. We have someone to use as a citizen here in our city and have a place to use our library and I think that, uh. The mall right there is a perfect place. Maybe the parking has a small problem here, but uh, we learned from a Salt Lake City. Library down there is not very good. I drive by multiple times and see so many. Uh, transits people are out there and they easily get in and out in that library and it's scary. When I take my kids down there. Um, make me nervous a little bit. Um, so I, I think it's a. The mall be suitable for the library deal so people can use it.
So for me, I think the neighborhood, I mean, the library needs to stay where it is just because of the neighborhood use. I think. They're saying getting in and out of it, the parking is not gonna be any easier at the mall. I think it'll be substantially more difficult. And most of our libraries in the county are in neighborhoods, accessible. You can just walk to them. You don't have to drive to it. I know I'm not, I don't like crossing busy streets, so I wouldn't have my kids walk across to the mall and still drive them. Here, the neighborhood around could walk to it. I think it's a lot more accessible. Um. And I'm, if you, the transient situation comes off, they're gonna walk across thirty or twenty seventh and be over there anyway. It's not far enough away from the. UTA system to discourage them from just going across to the mall.
I look at the um, rebuild of the Magna Library and the Kearns Library and I've visited both and. Granted, they're not next to a track station, but they don't seem to have the transient issues and they're really nice facilities. Um. I don't know. I think I would like to see it rebuilt where it's at. Um, both Magna and Kearns Libraries were. Reconstructed using new market tax credits, so just a little plug. They're saving our residents in the county money by bringing in. Um, you know, private investors to, to help offset the cost. And um, they're both nice, nice libraries.
Think, you know, we have a, we already have private investors who are willing to. To partner with us over at the Valley Fair property in, in the, the library. It's part of uh, their long-term plans and, and uh, I think they'll help. We keep it as, as a good facility. And uh, I'm in favor of, of the Valley Fair location.
Yeah, I'm also in favor of the Valley Fair location in that, yeah, in its current. Iteration that may seem a little clunky, but I think we have uh, a long-term vision as Mars mentioned to this. That's gonna be different and I think it will be a nice distinctive addition uh, to that piece of the city. And I, I would be more in favor of that and having that little pool. And with um, Will as well, I mean, we use the Kearns Library as much as we use the Hunter Library here in my household and. Great facilities and again, they're not right on the tracks line or they're not right. Uh, in the corridor and, and neither is Hunter. And so we don't have the same issues um, with transience and that and those. Associated things that come with that, uh, because of that. So, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the Valley Fair usage.
Do you have any information on the tenants at Valley Fair and whether or not they have? The capacity to take on?
Do you have any information on that, Mark, or any kind of feel?
Yeah, at this point, Mark Nord, economic development, at this point, the tenants have not been discussed. Uh, the, the, the library moving over there. Um, right now, it's between two locations. Um, we've had initial discussions with the county about. Staying here and right now that's off the table. So it's really down to if the council wants to move it to Valley Fair and if not, they're gonna put it at Redwood.
And are we talking, is it gonna be in the Redwood Rec Center or built on the property?
It would be within the rec center. So right now, the county does not have funding for total redevelopment of the rec center. So this would be kind of a. retrofit within a portion of the rec center. They currently don't have funding um, planned long-term to do a full remodel. That's still up in the air.
Then Valley Fair, is it gonna be in Valley Fair in the mall?
Be an exterior.
It'll be a exterior build, so I got funding for, for an exterior build of the mall, but not.
It's different process for the library fund versus the actual rec center funding. So they have funding for a new library.
So what do you want part of the Valley Fair property they're looking at?
Um, that would be in, in coordination with uh, the new mall owners, but what they're looking at and also addressing is parking garages next to. Where the Costco gas pumps are, that would be servicing the, where the uh, new library would be, which is just. To the south of the Marriott Hotel there.
So they have a couple of sites that they're looking at and on the Valley Fair property itself, but they are open. To, it's not a final decision.
Thank you, sir.
It could be moved within the property depending on, since kind of concerns or, yeah.
South of the Marriott?
East-ish quadrant.
So it's kind of a big parking lot that's underutilized.
Right.
More east of, or west of the Marriott.
Right, yeah. So again, not, not final. That was a, that was an initial. And seems to make sense, I would say, from a first look standpoint, but it wouldn't be. It wouldn't have to be there in the whole acreage.
Um, it's a good corner.
West of Costco Gas, or is it?
It'd be west of car, west of Costco Gas, west of the hotel, east of the corner where Pens and Ales are, roughly speaking, so.
So does this have anything to do, because I thought Wasatch Group had something that they were wanting to build there.
Sorry, Will, I didn't hear the last.
Will this be a standalone building?
Was this in connection with Wasatch Group and their development that they?
Yeah, so it's still, it's still a standalone building to the mayor's question, but yes, uh, obviously it would have to be done in partnership with them anyways. Because they're part of the ownership group there. And they are on board, if that was also part of your question.
Are they gonna sell this piece of property back to us?
We have had many discussions with them over, about that over the years. That would be our preference. That's what we would like to have. In terms of being able to incorporate that into the overall Fairborn Project. So that'd be our aim, Tom, yes. But obviously I have to get them to sign off on selling it, but it's what we would like to do. Okay, so it looks like we have at least four that are tentatively in favor of moving it to Valley Fair. What? Action should I take? Should we just make a phone call informally? Should we get a letter? What would you guys like us to do? I need something just from a, okay, this is the official position standpoint that Mayor Wilson will. Accept. And I don't think she specified. I, I, I think any of those options would be fine. I just more with preference for you guys.
I, I prefer something concrete more than a phone call.
Okay, how about a letter, just from a time standpoint? Okay.
Works. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. That's all I had.
Amy had one. Okay, okay.
Yep.
Um, if you recall, we had a student attend council a while back who wanted to do a reading of the proclamation. Um.
A reading of a proclamation?
Or reading of the constitution. Constitution, I'm sorry, different thought, it's kind of thought. Um, so she has been working with the U City Council and they have settled on a date. So they plan to do that on Thursday, September fourteenth, and they're planning to do two readings of that. Um. And that is, they wanna do one in Spanish and one in English. Um, and they'll need ten to fifteen English readers, ten to fifteen Spanish readers. Um, and they just wanted to see if any of the council members wanted to participate in that for one. And for two, she also had a uh, proclamation. Uh, that's where I got the proclamation. They had a proclamation that they were hoping the council could pass in support of, of doing that.
You wanna have an objection to the resolution or proclamation?
At six thirty is when they have it planned.
Okay, so if no one's objecting that, let's go ahead and do the proclamation. And then, so when I spoke to her last, she said they were gonna do a morning one, sort of be broadcast to the kids and then an evening one. Have they changed that then?
They did, yeah. Okay, they settled on the, the six thirty PM.
And they'll do them simultaneously.
Yes, so they'll do English and then the Spanish.
Okay.
So, and then if any of the council wants to participate in that, you can just let me know and I'll pass that on to uh, their youth advisor. And they'll get.
Did you say it's on a Tuesday?
It's a Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday at six thirty at night.
Thursday, and it'll be here. And if there's anyone in the community that you know that would like to participate in that, they're looking for people, especially Spanish. Our readers, so.
Awesome. Okay, so within the next two weeks?
That'd be great.
Okay. Right. Let's see, council reports. Precious.
Uh, this may be interesting, may not. I attended the meeting of the. South Salt Lake Island Mosquito Abatement District yesterday. And one of the things we do every year is uh, during mosquito season, we trap mosquitoes and test them for. Diseases and problems. Uh, there has not been a. A test, a positive test for West Nile in the entire state yet this year. So in uh, malaria, there's a little news about that, but it's. In the uh, southern areas where there's a lot more moisture and humidity. But the one point that they made was. This year. Is a good mosquito year.
Oh, yeah.
Through June, we have trapped and. Through June, we have trapped and tested over thirty seven thousand mosquitoes. Our five-year average through June is nine thousand. So we're a little above average this year. So, and most of those that we found are, I'm not gonna try to say the name of it, and I. I hear it, but I don't remember it, but they're night-biting mosquitoes, so. Uh, take precautions at night when you're out. Long-sleeved clothes, deep in the, in your uh, repellent. But if you are a little more bugged by mosquitoes, they're out there. There's more of them bugging you.
So, thank you.
And today we uh, met with the uh, West Valley, Healthy West Valley Committee.
Okay.
There, you've got quite a few plans going right now that will come to fruition and. Help us get more information out to the community about. Help. Their maintaining their health. Push those out as they come.
So do you have events that the council could come to?
Uh, not scheduled at this time.
Okay, but you'll let Nicole know if you do in the future?
They uh. They started talking about putting a calendar out. And everybody started talking about, you know, there, it's hard enough to coordinate my own events, you know, in my. My uh. Facility or my uh, committee, other than Healthy West Valley. Putting all those into one big master calendar. Uh, we might need a brainiac or something.
Thanks.
Not just our little laptops.
Alright. Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, the Chamber West Gala on the thirtieth, that may also be of interest for anyone to join and. Have dinner with me on my birthday.
Well, there you go. We don't have council meeting that night. They were very good to schedule so that we didn't, because Tuesday nights are their night to have these galas. So I appreciate them adjusting their schedules so that we could actually attend. So the more of us that can will make it worth their time.
Never responded, April.
Yeah. Angel has asked us for the. For who's going and taking a guest, so. Okay. So one side note from my Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District meeting yesterday. Um, people have understood the message. They do understand now that we're in a desert and our usage is down again this year. And so it's good for us as citizens and residents that. We'll have water for next year if we keep this going. So it won't matter as much what our winter is. We'd like a really heavy winter again. To build up those resources even better, but people are really being conscientious and still participating and. Granger Hunter has said that our usage is down, and that's really good for us, so we need to complement our residents, so. Okay, seeing no others, we'll go on strategic plan. We'll um, put that aside. And we will go to our review of our special municipal building authority meeting on July eighteenth, and I'll turn the time over. For Mr. Pyle.
Thanks, ma'am. So this would be a normal consent agenda item if it was in the city, but it's not. Uh, so we gotta have a one-item building authority meeting, and this is for execution of an under. Underground right-of-way easement in favor of Rocky Mountain Power. This will be connected to the Bus Rapid Transit Project.
Okay, any questions on that?
I am out of town, so Mr. Vashchir.
We'll take that meeting.
So.
Okay, and is that for like charging their buses as they go or?
Mm-hmm, well, no, sorry.
Not a bus charging station?
They might have something to do with that on their own.
Yes, and our, our.
And, right, we're able to use it for uh, our own charging stations on the other side of the. Grass and herbine right there, so that was part of it.
Agreement?
Yeah.
Great, okay. Any questions on that one? Hey, thank you. We don't have a need for a closed session that I've been made aware of. So we have one more action item to adjourn. Um, after we adjourn, you, Dot and staff will be out in the foyer for about a half hour. And so we'll conclude that at seven o'clock, so the staff can go home at a reasonable hour. And I'm just looking for one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned. Thank you.